I must have lost that.
Everybody ready? I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 19th, City of Vandelia Council Meeting. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this evening's agenda to add a resolution, which will amend Resolution 20-R-61 as it relates to our summer meeting schedule.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we amend our agenda to add Resolution 21-R-46. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the council retreat minutes of May 12th, the study session minutes of June 21st, and the council meeting minutes of June 21st. Are there any comments or corrections? Being done, they stand approved. That brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, and at this time, we have a proclamation for Andrea Marie Perron, her life-saving efforts. So if you could join me at the podium. Andrea, we appreciate you coming here tonight. I know as many of you probably saw here, week ten days ago on Facebook, as I was, like most of you, I was just bruising Facebook, and I saw a post by her daughter Danielle talking about her mom, giving her recognition for her life-saving efforts. And I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'd like you to just go ahead and tell us a little bit about what happened and your perspective of it, and then we also have a proclamation we'd like to present to you on behalf of the City of Vandelia.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your invitation today. We had gone to Florida to visit my parents. They moved there in December of last year. We were on our way back on a flight from Orlando to Chicago. We had a layover in Chicago. About two hours into the flight, and actually, it just dozed off, I think, a little bit, and I was awakened by the flight attendant calling for emergency personnel. We were actually pretty much close to the back of the plane, and the emergency was right behind first class, so it was about twenty in front of us. I was in the window. Poor Danielle was in the center, and Jason was in the aisle, and I could kind of see there was some commotion going on up front. And I jumped over them, tried to push my way through, got up there. We realized there was a gentleman in the lavatories. You know how small they are? He was kind of a larger guy. And he was slumped over, blue, cold to the touch, not breathing, no pulse. Another nurse joined me from Orlando Medical Center, Orlando Regional Medical Center. Her name was Tawana, and both of us started to initiate CPR at that time. We rotated. They did have emergency medical equipment onboard. They had an AED, the defibrillator. They only had one on the aircraft, and it was a brand-new one, and unfortunately, it failed. So that was addressed with the airline after the incident. My suggestion to them was maybe putting one in the front of the plane and one in the back of the plane. In case one failed, they wouldn't have this issue come up again. We initiated CPR. In the emergency bag, there were a lot of equipment that we needed. There was a bag, so we didn't have to do mouth-to-mouth. We were able to bag the patient. We gave the patient three doses of Epi, which is a medication given a lot of times in CPR to kind of give it a kickstart. After fifteen solid minutes of compressions with her and I rotating, we were taxiing, and the gentleman regained a pulse. So my kids did a great job. At one point, we needed blankets, so they were preparing blankets just because of the dignity that gentleman wasn't appropriately dressed and things of that nature. So I'm proud of them, too, for helping out.
Well, that is wonderful. I mean, that's an incredible story. It is wonderful that, I'm sure, the person is internally grateful for you and their family. I think it was just a great opportunity for you to be there and share your knowledge. Is that what saved his life?
It was a little stressful, knowing that his wife and two children were directly behind us, so they were observing everything. The best part of it for me, though, I mean, I've been in healthcare since I was sixteen, with the exception of a few years. The best part was there was a language barrier, so when I turned around, all I had to do was kind of pat my chest and shake my head, and instant tears from the wife. So she understood what I was saying, and she gave me a big hug. And I was doing pretty well up until the point where we were walking through the concourse, and then the adrenaline wore off, and apparently, the kids said I turned, like, cherry red, and I just had to sit down. So, you know, I do this every day. And I don't do CPR every day, but I'm in healthcare for a reason, and I would have done it for anybody. And, you know, if it was my family or any of my loved ones, you know, I would hope somebody would take the initiative to do that for my family as well.
We appreciate it. We're grateful that you were on that flight, being able to save that person's life. We do have a proclamation here. I'd like to read to you. You give me big print, because I'm getting old. I can't see well. I'll read this to you. Whereas the City of Vandelia seeks to recognize and honor outstanding citizens and their accomplishments, and whereas Andrea Marie Perron is a Vandelia resident who has distinguished herself as a brave, caring professional willing to come to the aid of others in dire circumstances, and whereas on Friday, July 9th, a passenger onboard her flight to Chicago suffered medical emergency requiring immediate action, and whereas Andrea Marie Perron, along with another passenger, selfishly came to the aid of the passenger, rigorously performing CPR for more than fifteen minutes, and whereas after several minutes of strenuous effort, the passenger's heartbeat was restored, and whereas the life-saving efforts of Andrea Marie Perron reflect positively on her family and the people of Vandelia. Now therefore, I, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim Monday, July 19th, 2021, as Andrea Marie Perron Day in the City of Vandelia, and urge all of our citizens to congratulate Andrea Marie Perron for her heroic actions in saving the life of another human being.
Thank you.
All right. How would you like us to, where would you like us to stand? If all the family could come up, we'll get a picture.
Mayor, real quick while they're taking their seats, I just wanted people to emphasize part of her story, and that is, for anyone who's done CPR for a few minutes, it's an exhausting task, and for somebody to be able to do it for fifteen minutes on somebody, even on changing off with somebody and in tight quarters and everything else, that is just a huge accomplishment. So that should not be understated, because fifteen minutes doing CPR continuously is a cardiovascular exercise that few people can undertake. In my career, I've never done it for fifteen minutes, and I hope I never have to for fifteen minutes. So thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to say anything? Maybe she wants to. Our city manager's informed me that it's not necessary if you don't want to stay for the entire meeting, so we take no offense for anyone that wants to leave after that, but you're also welcome to stay if you like. Don't everybody get in the one?
No offense taken.
No hurry. School board member, Dan Perron? I think he's been to his share of meetings. Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Okay, next we'll move on. We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. And is there anyone online that would like to make a comment also? They can state their name and address. We have a gentleman right now, so floor is yours.
Thanks. My name is Mike Kale. I live out 9261 Dogleg. I don't know, you know, we're part of the City of Vandelia, too. There's about eight of us out there. I don't know if Vandelia or the council was aware of some of the findings that from the well testing they've been doing in that area. It all started out at Allwood Autobahn, where they found quantities of PFAS, which is a carcinogenic, and is also linked to some long-term birth defects and other things, and the water supply out there. So the Ohio EPA came in and did some sporadic testing, which led to a letter to all the people in the area, basically telling them that we found this out there. You're pretty close by, so we think you should go spend $500 to get your well tested. There's a list of people out there, so I didn't really pay much attention to it at that time, because they said they were going to do more testing. Well, two weeks ago, they sent another letter out to all the residents in that area, including Butler Township and some stuff, you know, up past there, saying they had found more of it in some of the drinking water systems, which is concerning. Number one, a lot of that stuff, they think, was used in firefighting materials that is used at airports. That is one of the main suspected things that contribute to this. The groundwater in our area is very shallow up there, so anything, even at Allwood, could affect our water that we're even closer to the airport. So again, I wanted to see if the city knew about this. I did talk to our state rep, Phil Plummer, Friday. He is also aware of this, because he actually lives out there with us. And I also talked to Montgomery County liaison, Tom Hunt, who was working with the Ohio EPA on some of this testing. He told me that at this time, that the Ohio EPA had no more, they were not going to do any more testing sampling, and basically, it was up to the residents to find out if we had this stuff in our water by paying $500. And also, he talked about some of the mitigation costs, putting in treatment systems for this water if it is found. And again, I didn't know if the city would be able to take this any farther on their end. He said when he gets back into session after his month recess, he is going to look at talking to the state legislature about additional testing. So again, I just wanted to make you guys aware of what's going on out there.
Okay. I want to, I'm Mr. Kale. I'm not an original, so if I don't say your last name correctly, you'll correct me. Kale. The, Mr. Kale, the city is aware of the presence of the polyfluorale alkalis, the PFOS, the PFOA, these are forever chemicals that come out of surfactants. What I will do is, I will try to come up to speed a little bit more on the testing procedures, for the extent of that. My understanding is that abatement and remediation in most places is almost nonexistent, and really, one of the only ways, one of the only ways kind of around this, if there is a cancer-causing substance that's at or above an actionable level, as defined by the EPA, is really to go around it by abandoning wells and tying into some sort of utility system for water. As a person that grew up on well water, I can understand what a disappointment that is about having an additional utility payment, but I will tell you that I will work with the staff and our public service director to try to see and give any sort of relevant reports on our end that are affecting you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I mean, like I said, it's affecting our well water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Okay. Being done, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the city manager's report. We have a information item.
Yes, sir. And actually, what I'd like to do at this point is, I'll invite our new city planner to come and step up here. This is Mr. Zach Cardo. Mr. Cardo, I'd just like to introduce you and give him a few words, opportunity to share a few words. He is a graduate of the Ohio State University. He recently had significant planning experience in Collier County in Florida. That's where Naples, Florida is located. He's a Butler Township resident. I like him because he likes hunting. That's not what got him the job, just a bonus. And I anticipate in the future that he'll be contributing to our park and rec, our master plan, helping us realize some of those lofty goals that we've set out to accomplish in the Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan, and a whole slew of other things. So he's got a bunch of great ideas. I think that he'll do really well, working directly under Assistant City Manager Hall Away, and so, Zach, you can take it away.
Okay. I don't have a lot to say, but I'm just really excited to be here. I grew up in a small town similar to Vandelia, so I feel that passion for the small-town, hometown feel, and I think I can make a difference here, so I'm happy to be here.
Well, I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of you, and we appreciate you taking this position, and especially with you being a resident of Butler Township. You're a little more plugged into this community, and we look forward to working with you here in the future.
Absolutely. I actually got the same letters this gentleman just got about the water as well, so.
There you go. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
The, well, we've got on here for the summer schedule, and you've actually, you've modified the, you've moved to modify the summer schedule? Or at least we've modified it.
Yes, we have it here as an informational item, but we've, it will not be August 16th. It's going to be moved to the...
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Correct.
And since this schedule is set by resolution, we'll have to make that change by resolution, and that is what Councilmember Follic did earlier today, was amend the agenda to put that resolution on, and it will presumably be passed as Resolution 46.
So it'll be August 23rd, but at the same times that are listed on the agenda for anybody who might be interested in attending on August 23rd. The other portion that I have here is an action item, if I may. The action item here is the extension of time for the Brown School Village Section 4. An enclosed is a memorandum from Mr. Kron. Staff's recommending a one-year extension of time to construct a sidewalk for running lots 42 to 45 in Brown School Village Section 4. A performance bond is posted as surety. A one-year extension is requested to complete all subdivision items. The new deadline will be August 8th, 2022.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the extension of time for Brown School Village Section 4 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst, and a second by Councilman Lewis, that we approve the extension of time for Brown School Village Section 4. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of tonight, that being Resolution 21-R-41. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract extension for municipal refuse collection and disposal services to Rumki of Ohio, Inc.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
In 2016, the city approved a five-year contract for the calendar years 2017 through 2021 with Rumki of Ohio for collection of waste and recycling for Vandelia residents. The contract has an option to renew for a two-year period at an agreed-upon price. Rumki has submitted pricing for the two-year extension, including an option to convert our recycling to 95-gallon cart to be collected every other week. The prices reflect an annual increase of 4%. To continue with the current service, or a 3% increase if we choose to switch to the every-other-week recycling option. I would like to express my desire, on the part of the city, to obtain weekly curbside collection of single-stream recycling from the carts in the future, but it doesn't appear to be possible at this time. As such, I'll recommend that we continue with the current service and the two-year contract extension at a 4% increase each year.
Have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-41 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst, and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers, that we approve Resolution 21-R-41 as presented. Are there any comments?
My only comment, I mean, I respect the city manager's recommendation, staff's recommendation, but for the reasons I've spoken about in our study session the past two months, I will be voting against the extension in favor of rebidding the service to our residents.
Anyone else?
Well, yeah, if I can respond to Mr. Follic's comment. I think everyone's in agreement with that, of getting the 65-gallon tote to be picked up on a weekly basis, but offsetting to that, I think the risk of opening up this contract to negotiations, it just exposes us to higher labor, higher material costs, and there's a lot of risk of doing that. Secondly, the 4% increase is really off of a 2018 base rate as opposed to the 2021 base, so that's why I'm voting to approve it.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follic?
No.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries six one. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-42. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for snow and ice removal.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, this resolution authorizes an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for snow and ice removal within the city's corporate limits on airport-access road. ODOT will perform snow and ice removal and apply snow and ice control material on airport-access, which is equivalent to 6.2 lane miles and is currently the responsibility of the city. Under the agreement, the city will be required to remove snow and ice and apply snow and ice control materials to all lanes of US Route 40, from the western corporate limits out to Frederick Pike. This is a total of 2.6 lane miles. That's currently the responsibility of ODOT. I propose that council authorize the agreement, given the roadways, necessary equipment, continuity of respected routes, likelihood of providing safer roadways, and overall cost savings relating to the city's reduced responsibility by plowing 3.6 fewer lane miles.
Have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Resolution 20-R-42 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we approve Resolution 21-R-42 as presented. Are there any comments?
Other than, I think it's a real good deal, and a heads-up by our city manager to take the opportunity to negotiate this. I think it only makes sense that it's efficient for both entities, and it's a great partnership with ODOT. Collaboration really helps relationships along the way, so I think it's great to do this.
I was going to think, say about the same thing, so is there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-43. Mr. McDonald?
Resolution awarding the bid for equipment and complete equipment installation for three police patrol vehicles requested by the Division of Police to K.E. Rose Company in the amount of $46,536, and declaring the equipment being replaced as surplus property.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
The Police Division opened bids on May 7th, 2021, for the purchase and installation of new equipment for three new Ford Utility Interceptor police vehicles. The 2021 budget for this project is $49,350. Two bids were received with K.E. Rose Company submitting a bid for $46,536, and Northern Light Upfitting submitting a bid for $39,866.64. Although Northern Light Upfitting submitted the lowest bid, Chief Althouse outlined several reasons to recommend that the bid be awarded to K.E. Rose. In this case, Northern Light Upfitting has not yet established a widespread public safety customer base, and the vendor has requested upfront payment. Such a risk is suboptimal and does not serve the interests of promoting the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Vandelia. The remaining funds will be used for the installation of decals and graphics by a separate vendor, and I do believe the proprietor from Northern Light Upfitting is present today and is requested to speak.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for our record.
How are you doing? David Marble, owner of Northern Light Upfitting at 114 South Main Street, Unit D. I just wanted to reiterate really quick that I was not asking for upfront payment. I don't know where that came about. I had put in to pay for parts after inspection, or I was also open to doing one car at a time, so, and then, you know, for each car get paid for as they get updated. Another thing is, I'm really hoping that you don't use my lack of working with other companies against me, as I, you know, would work really hard for you guys, and like I said in the beginning, you would be my first outfit. As a business for myself, I've been doing this for many, many years. I've got set up with multiple vendors for all of your guys' equipment and get you into that car for about $6,000 less than the other bid, and that's enough to stripe all your guys' cars, you know, for one price. So again, thank you again for letting me stand up, and it was great meeting you last meeting, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 21-R-43 as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic, and a second by Councilman Lewis, that we approve Resolution 21-R-43 as presented. Are there any comments?
I just want to comment, I mean, I, and I respect the other vendor for showing up this evening and addressing counsel. As someone that's spent 20-plus years in law enforcement, and the importance of the process of the upfitting of cruisers, and getting those, a limited number of cruisers in service and out on the street, and not affecting the operations of the organization, you know, Chief Althouse has stipulated or explained in his justification to go with a vendor that we have used in the past and can accomplish that with no, as little delay as possible for the operational needs of the department. And I think right now, especially for our police cruisers, that's what's most important and to continue the operations of the department. I would highly suggest, though, as, you know, if there's other vehicles in our city fleet that need upfitted in the future, that you bid on that project as well, something that may not be as... that you bid on that project as well, something that may not be as crucial and timely as a public safety vehicle, so that we can see that work product as we move forward with other fleet updates in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-four. Mr. McDonald.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for community development block grant funds for a playground structure and new safety surface at Helkey Park.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Sorry, I'm controlling the screen too. Get a little behind. The, Your Honor, I'm requesting council's authorization to an endorsement to apply to the Montgomery County for the community development block grant funds for a playground structure and safety service at Helkey Park. The proposed project would include demolition and removal of the current two playground structures and the installation of a new playground. The project would also include an addition of one swing set bay and will be ADA accessible in an inclusive nature. And so, I think this is a great opportunity for outside funding in a economically disadvantaged portion per the census tract.
Thank you. Have a motion.
I move that we approve, oh, go ahead. I move that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-four as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilman Folic that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-four. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-five. Mr. McDonald.
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for Part Two of the design and engineering for the final design of the Vandalia Bike Way Connector with LGB Inc. in the amount of three hundred nine thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
The city of Vandalia has partnered with Five Rivers Metro Parks for the construction of the Vandalia Bike Way Connector. The Bike Way will make a connection from the Great Miami River Trail near Taylorsville Dam to the existing bike path that runs along National Road over the I-75 Bridge. The city was previously awarded a congestion mitigation and air quality, or CMAC, grant for improvement funds through MVR PC in the amount of two million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and three dollars for construction. The design and engineering costs are to be shared by the city of Vandalia and Five Rivers Metro Parks. City of Vandalia is the lead agency, and therefore, we must contract with the consultant for the design and then be reimbursed by Five Rivers Metro Parks for their share. I'm recommending that council authorize me to enter into a contract with LJB in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars for the engineering and design of the Bike Way.
Thank you. Have a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-five.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-five. Are there any comments? I would just like to say, I think this is a great opportunity for the city of Vandalia to gain access to the bike path, and this is a three point one five million dollar project, and the city's share in this is approximately a little over seventeen percent. So, the residents of Vandalia are coming out pretty good in this situation here. Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-six. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution amending Resolution Twenty-R sixty-one as it relates to the summer meeting schedule for the month of August, 2021.
Do we need any more discussion on that, or can we just go ahead and call the roll?
I think we beat it to death earlier, so.
Okay. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst that we approve Resolution Twenty-One dash R dash forty-six as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have an ordinance in its first reading, and that being Ordinance Twenty-One dash eighteen. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, and I just want to pass on to council both this ordinance and the next one. This one dealing with the PUD, the next one dealing with rezoning. Both are required to go into a second hearing because our zoning code requires us to hold a public hearing. So, for purposes of tonight, we're simply moving this to the next meeting as required. Ordinance Twenty-One eighteen, an ordinance approving a PUD major amendment for the property located at 139 South Dixie Drive and owned by Mark Wheatstone in a planned unit development district.
Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Richard Drake, the applicant, is requesting an amendment to an approved PUD plan in order to construct a five hundred and eighty-six square foot addition to an existing detached garage. The proposed addition would require the relocation of four parking spaces. The planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval with three conditions.
Have a motion.
I do. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Councilman Folic.
I make a motion to approve Ordinance Twenty-One eighteen with the conditions of the planning commission.
Second.
You guys are killing me. I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One dash eighteen with the conditions that have been noted by the planning commission. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance Twenty-One dash nineteen.
And again, like the first one, this is simply to move it forward.
Right.
An ordinance rezoning eight point nine five two acres of land located at 2,700 West National Road from highway business to industrial and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, E.B. Fuel Stops, the applicant, has requested the rezoning of eight point nine five two acres of land located at 2,700 West National Road from highway business to industrial. The purpose of the rezoning request is to construct a truck stop facility. The planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we do not approve the rezoning of 2,700 West National Road from highway business to industrial.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fairst that we do not approve Ordinance Twenty-One dash nineteen. Are there any comments?
I just have a question or clarification for the law director. I mean, for the rezoning to be proper under our code, we have to go to a second.
Right, there has to be a public hearing and a second hearing.
So, do we?
So, we shouldn't be taking action to not approve it at the first hearing. It should just be simply a motion to carry it forward.
amend the motion, so moved.
We'll need the second also to be, Ms. Fairst, do you agree with that?
Second, sorry.
Okay, so this is just a motion to carry the ordinance to the second reading, which is required because of the public hearing.
Correct. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Ordinance Twenty-One dash twenty. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance amending Section 642.16 of the Vandalia Codified Ordinances.
Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance will amend Section 642 dot one six of the Vandalia Codified Ordinance in order to efficiently enforce nuisance activities within the city of Vandalia. In consideration of the recommendations of Chief Althouse, Chief Folic, and Law Director McDonald, I am recommending that the ordinance be modified to include the advertising of massage relaxation and any other massage technique or method or any related service with the suggestion or promise of sexual activity as described in Ohio Revised Code two-three-two-nine dot one-seven as in the criminal activity as the nuisance section of the Vandalia Codified Ordinance 642 dot one six, among others.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One dash twenty. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folic that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One dash twenty. Are there any comments? Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in their second reading. However, we do have an emergency ordinance, and that being Ordinance Twenty-One dash seventeen. Mr. McDonald.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash collection, and sewer and water.
Thank you. Have a motion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Since this is a public hearing, I need to open up for comments from citizens. So, if anyone would like to make a comment on this particular ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One seventeen as emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers that we approve Emergency Ordinance Twenty-One dash seventeen. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have reports from boards and commissions. We have the planning commission meeting minutes of May twenty-fifth, 2021. Are there any comments? Being none, they stand approved. We have the June bill listing in the amount of two million, sixteen thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fifteen cents, and we have the June purchase card detail in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. And that brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Your Honor, we, I just want to take a moment to say, please mark your calendars and plan, if you are able, to attend the employee family pool party next Friday at Castle Hills Pool from six to eight-thirty P.M. We'll take this opportunity to show appreciation to our core of public servants and also invite their families. The other thing, I'd like to say thank you to all of our police officers, firefighters, all of our public work staff, the city manager's office, all of our volunteers that basically came from every department for helping with the airshow and the airshow parade. Ton of work went into that event. It was very much a success and, I think, a great way to show recognition of our boards and commissions, volunteers at the city, our current businesses, and then also prospects that we have for economic development gains at the airshow. So, thank you for that. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
This isn't going to be so brief, and I apologize because it'll be a little protracted. But in the recent blue letter that our city manager puts out, he included a narrative from one of our police officers, Jenny Childs, as it relates to the service that a number of police officers provided to a family in need during the last week. And if you'll indulge me, I wanted to read this because I thought it was pretty impressive and was emblematic of, to use the rotary term, service above self. These folks really went the extra mile. So, this is a narrative from Officer Childs. During the past week, a mother in her late fifties and her twenty-one-year-old developmentally disabled daughter found themselves suddenly homeless due to their landlord kicking them out with no notice. Neither of the women knew what to do or how to navigate the system to get help. Officer Robert Large found that the two were living in a tent in a stranger's yard on Little York Road with two dogs. He purchased food for them and for their dogs with his own money. He also provided them with blankets as they had none. It had rained every day for the past three days while they had been sleeping in a tent. Officer Large reached out to me to see if the ADA, MHS, or Southern Community could help them. I made some phone calls and got the ball rolling on getting them connected to the services in Montgomery County to help with housing and benefits. Officer Large contacted the food bank, and John Wheeler provided them with a box of food to last a couple of days. Officer Large contacted the dog rescue group, who agreed to foster their dogs until they can find housing, and he's in the process of getting that taken care of. Today, I share this story with my crews at Roll Call and Pastor Husong, who was there to do a ride-along. Officer Bryson was with her today and was in the south car. Officer Bryson took Christina to their tent, and Christina started the process of getting them intake appointments at Eastway so they can get services. While Officer Bryson was there, it began raining quite hard and washed out the tent, flooding all of their belongings. Officer Bryson reached out to me and asked what we could do to help. I had her contact Pastor Husong and see if his church could put them in a motel for a few days until the homeless system could possibly find them housing. Pastor Husong paid for a week at the Super Eight Motel to get them out of the weather. Officer Bryson transported them to their room along with their belongings and then purchased them dinner. I gave a friend of mine money to go to the store and get them some clothes and toiletries since all of their stuff was ruined by the rain. Pastor Husong said he will check on them in a couple of days this week and to make sure they have food. Mark Collins helped Officer Bryson move the rest of the belongings from Little York Road to their motel with the approval of Rudy Wells. Officer Blackford and Clymer went to Kroger and bought them some food as well. All of this was completed while still handling calls for service. And as is noted, this is a great example of the community we live in, work, and worship in. And I thought this was important to let people know. And it was a whole community act from the food pantry and the pastor and certainly our police service personnel. So, thank you, and congratulations to those people that served, along with Andrea Marie Perron, who, whose service goes beyond trying to put accolades on. So, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Fairst.
I think I'm going to be a little long-winded tonight, too, because I started to write out some notes about thanking all our staff for the airshow and airshow parade, and people don't realize how much work that is on staff and what a benefit it is to the city, especially this year when Dan was new and had such an opportunity to meet and talk to businesses and the volunteers that we invited as our guests. So, I think it was, it was a great airshow in regard to the benefits to the city. But more than that, when I went back and read your blue letter, I realized that we always say truck traffic is, or I always say, truck traffic's our number-one priority. But thinking about it more the last couple of weeks, I hear probably from our citizens that communication concerns, that they don't know what's going on. And when I reread your blue letter, I'm thinking, that information needs to, more of that information needs to go out to our citizens. They need to understand this kind of information, the benefit to the city of the airshow. And I would like, you know, in the future, to really put a concentrated effort on our ability to do more communications with our citizens. I know we started a quarterly newsletter with the township. It's just not enough. I think we need to make a concerted effort in that direction, and I would like to see us work on that. After that, thank you to Andrea Marie Perron. And if you guys are having the day today to celebrate, we could probably go with you and do that. But thank you for Zack Carto being.